All right.
I just wanted to speak to those two.
All right. Okay. Yes?
Is that me?
Yes. That's better. That's better than I, okay. Good evening, and we will get our meeting going here of the Board of Education of Rhode Island, Olivia Lake, Lillian Independent School District number 2534. Got a few more people to admit here as they're coming in. And thank you, it's seven o'clock and we are recording. And I will call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the approval of our agenda. Nothing to add, correct Mr. Bransoy?
That's great.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion is made by Sagetall.
Seconded Benson.
Seconded by Benson to approve the, are there any questions on the agenda or any discussion? Okay, hearing no questions, we will vote and we'll begin with Brian.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. More people admitted here, we will begin, well, we'll keep going with the recognition of visitors to our board meeting, we've got, it's like we've got quite a crew here, it's like fifty-two right now on Zoom, and I saw some of the senior, senior students from Bold who are here to observe a meeting, so welcome to everyone, and we'll try to keep it going as quickly as we can to get you on with the rest of your night. We are in the public forum, part of our meeting, and it's placed on the agenda for regular board meetings, during this part of each regular school board meeting, up to ten minutes of time will be allowed for district constituents to address the school board. Each person or topic may have up to two minutes of time, this is a time of listing by the school board, and I do have two minutes on my clock, and how we're going to do this is if you would like to speak, unmute your mic, state your name, and I will acknowledge you, and then when we have five people, we'll just go in that order. So if anybody would like to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name. And I will write it down.
Hi, Randy Turstig.
Okay, thank you Randy. Anyone else?
Dave Roundhorse.
Dave Roundhorse, okay, thank you. Would anybody else like? All right, going once, going twice, three times, I have Mr. Turstig and Mr. Roundhorse, so we'll start with Mr. Turstig and your two minutes starts right now.
Okay, Randy Turstig from Olivia, I spent a lot of time the last several days reviewing the application our district put together for a new school. Towards the end of the document, I found a couple of interesting pages, I'm not, I'm not going to talk about the mistakes I found with the tax calculations, or the fact that there are no engineered signed documents proving the cost of repairs or tilting of information to try to justify this proposal, I'm only going to talk about the one big ugly number of ninety-three million dollars. That's what we are proving the district to spend over the next twenty-five years if this bond proposal is accepted. You heard me right, that's ninety-three million dollars. The first thing that came to my mind is that we are absolutely robbing our kids of the education they could have, not one dollar of that ninety-three million is going to extra programming or extra classrooms or teachers. We'll be spending almost four million dollars a year for the next twenty-five years on bricks and mortar. This is so unfair to our youth, just think if we spent half that much on programming. I want our district to have the best teachers and programs of any school in the state. It looks like an option was included in this application which added seventeen thousand square feet of new classes, classrooms, and spent just as money, much money on technology, furniture, and equipment as the complete new school would have, and also provided a safe environment for a cost of about twenty-eight million dollars. I'm wondering why that was not put on the ballot. I received a call from my son at college today, a lot of you know the one, he's the one that gets the yes calls or the vote yes from the yes committee people, and I started thinking about colleges and buildings. Some of the most prestigious colleges in the world have buildings well over a hundred years old, and they have a waiting list of students that want to go to school there and teachers that want to teach there. So I ask, ninety-three million dollars, who's ego, who's ego is this proposal for? It's not for our kids, let's spend the money and educate our kids and not brick and mortar.
Okay, thank you, and that was your two minutes, Mr. Turstig, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Mr. Roundhorse. Soon as you're ready.
Okay.
All right, well done.
My name is Dave Roundhorse, lived in Olivia, Minnesota my whole life. Pat served on the steering committee, which yielded this proposal, and she knows that after weeks of meeting that all legitimate proposals were thrown out at the last minute, and this one was dropped in at the last minute with little or no study or discussion. This is not a community proposal, and the board should be ashamed of using this one. Will our kids have any future in the financial burden of this project on their backs? Children not even born today will be responsible for the balance of the bond referendum. Find a consultant who has our children's future in mind. With ICS track record, I'm confident that their billing assessment is partly done. My son was listening to one of our recent conversations, he asked if we knew what ICS stood for and quickly responded to his own question, I'm coming for your savings, that's our kids' savings. Finally, we have kids rioting in the streets across the nation asking for all of their student loans to be forgiven. It is time to realize that some of the older generation has used these kids for their personal profits while appealing to their youthful spending habits, leaving them buried in student loans, car loans, credit card debts. Isn't it time for someone as influential as a public school to join in with parents and begin teaching our children how to better manage their money? With interest, taxpayers will have to come up with over ninety to a hundred million dollars in the next twenty-five years to pay back debit. Young people will be buried in property taxes and will have little economical future living in the Bold School District. Please give our kids a future, give them a chance, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Turstig and Mr. Roundhorse. All right, we will move on from consent items, and we have just one motion needed to approve the consent items, the consent items, this month we have approved the bills payment and approve the minutes from the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty regular meeting and the January fourth, twenty-twenty-one organizational meeting. Motion is made by Bolin. Seconded by Benson, are there any questions or any discussion in any of the consent items?
I have a question, is the consent item, is that for the detailed payment, are you sure we got it?
Yes, okay.
So, I'm new and I just have a couple of questions, so just bear with me. So, these are just things that stuck out to me and I felt like I have objections, but I just wanted to mention it, so I noticed that, right now we put nineteen thousand seven forty-eight, twenty-five before the teacher's retirement, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, okay, I'm just checking that. So you are, okay, you're on the page two of the detailed payment register. And what is the New Dominion School? On page nine of twenty, what is that for fourteen thousand eight sixty-one? It's showing three people there, is that, P S O or P F C O?
No, that's, Jim, is that the New Dominion, is that Austin's?
That's especially.
Yeah, especially.
All right. And then I noticed on page, it left ten of twenty, there was collection service suspended for three sixty-nine. What is the collection for? Payroll deductions, it says. That's something, unless you know Mr. Bransoy, that?
We're, we're on.
We're on page ten of twenty. Payroll deduction, collection services center, three sixty-nine fifty. I don't know if that sometimes. We just look garnish, I don't know exactly, it was something you could ask.
Which item?
The two. That went down on page, collection services center.
Yeah.
Six down from the top.
Okay.
Yeah, because they weren't, well, I guess the other ones.
I'll make a note of that, I'll check on that for sure, I'm not sure what that is. It's a payroll deduction, so it's, it's.
On page thirteen of twenty, there's Captivate Media Consulting, is that for the, for thirty-five hundred dollars?
No.
What is Captivate Media Consulting?
That could be, well, because it's.
It says K R referendum.
So.
Which one is that?
That's on thirteen of twenty, right, so right under B S N Sports. Yeah, there's page twelve referendum, fifty percent something cut off for thirty-five hundred dollars.
Captivate Media is what the, the videotape for our, our vote here, or not vote here, but for the.
Just the, for the district.
That's the company that consults with that, so that's theirs.
Anything else?
That's the company that put the video together for our, for our website for the referendum.
Oh. All right, and then I see, it says Dale Bransoy on page fourteen of twenty, compensation fifty-two fifty, that's your monthly salary or monthly? Yep, fourteen of twenty. Says compensation for six thousand two hundred.
Yes, that's my monthly, that's my monthly contribution.
And then, I think, just a lot. Okay, so the other thing too is like, seat change on page eighteen of twenty, for eleven hundred forty-two dollars, I see there's a bunch of different, I, I realize that for, I just want to know, like, for the envelope, the return envelope for registered, non-registered envelope, registered, agent with every signature, non-registered, signature envelope. I just want to make sure that's neutral. Do you know what I'm saying, do they, do we usually get ballots and stuff through the school for referendums, or do they have to do that?
No, they're, they're published, I mean, they're not, we don't, this is all cost of getting the ballots and all that, it's doesn't come through the school.
So the school is paying for, but these, these, envelopes and stuff we supply those?
Yes.
Okay. I just got a message that Teresa's phone is not muted. So they're getting.
I, it looks like it's muted though, I mean, right now there's a, it's muted.
But it looks like that's where the sound's coming from?
I'm not, I'm not hearing any sound. I, the only one that's not muted is, is mine, so, at this point, I see.
I have a quick question here too, on page sixteen, McCone Foods looks like we bought Pickle Herring from the FFA sale, oh, why did we buy it from them? Another one for some of the things that happened. That have been what was sold for your FFA?
That's what I would assume is.
Yeah. Like for school, the school paid for some of that, you know, the FFA brings their money in from what is, right, I mean, you know.
Fifteen dollars?
Well, Pickle Herring is a separate entity, so like when you would do your, your sales for food, it would be true down on page butter braised and then Pickle Herring and coffee, so they'd be four separate.
They pay four separate people for this stuff, must be. Yep. Any other questions?
If you get an opportunity, we are, business manager, well, other people in the office can run it too, but when you get this is, you know, don't hesitate to call and say, hey, what is this or what is that? It's hard for us to pick out those individual items like that, some of them we know, but some, you know, we don't know. So if you have questions, please look at them and then call the district office and either Jody or Joy can answer that question on Mondays, Lindsay's here, and then I'll give you a breakdown of it, so.
The only thing I can say, if I didn't get my packet to late Friday afternoon.
It was late this week, I'm sorry.
We usually give them even Thursday and Friday. It would be nice if we could get them a week prior.
We will, we will, we don't have everything in the office by week prior. This is current, so our billing and everything, we, we don't get those till the middle of the week, that's the final.
Maybe we could, if we could strive for Wednesday, that would be.
I can ask.
That gives us more working days.
Yeah.
Let me do some checking, I mean, I'll see how this, because this is a big part, is when is the billing all done and when does Joy and Jody get that done to go here and Lindsay and stuff. So we'll see, I'll give you more.
We'll give you more time, to kind of look for it, then have time to ask questions. Weekend, you don't get a home anybody, and Mondays if you're busy, which, if you're doing payroll, which, that's.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we will vote and we'll begin with Jamie. I, Sandy?
I, Melissa?
I, Teresa?
I.
Brian?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to personnel. And we approve the resignation of Tammy Stepple, Assistant Volleyball Coach effective January fourth of twenty-twenty-one. Oh, Benson, motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Sagetall. Any discussion or questions?
Just wanted to say thank you to Tammy for all, for years of service, I did give her a hard time until her, I was not happy to read that, but I get it, so, thanks.
Thank you Tammy. You did a great job.
All right. So with that, we will vote and we'll begin with Sandy. I, Melissa?
I.
Teresa?
I.
Brian?
Aye.
Jamie?
I.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. Number two, approve Mariah Lo as an elementary special education care professional starting January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, grade two, beginning rate of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-nineteen M S B A master agreement. So I'm going. Made by Bolin. I will second that. Any questions or discussion?
Joe, we're going through the twenty-two-seven, twenty, past point seventeen, twenty-nineteen, or is he a, because we haven't?
Because we have not settled that contract yet.
Thank you.
So, yes, good question. All right, any other questions? Hearing nothing else, we will vote and we'll begin with Melissa.
I.
Teresa?
I.
Brian?
Aye.
Jamie?
I.
Sandy?
I.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. Number three, approve the resignation of Derek Wolfert, Little Warriors Care Professional effective January twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one.
Smooth bone.
Motion is made by Bolin.
Seconded Sagetall.
Seconded by Sagetall. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with Teresa.
I.
Brian?
Aye.
Jamie?
I.
Sandy?
I.
Melissa?
I.
And I myself, I am an aye. Motion carries. Moving on reports, we'll begin with our superintendent's reports.
Okay, I listed four items here, just to review quickly, the first one is a positive review and comment discussion, and that's if you remember back in November, Teresa and Brian were on the board at that time, but that's when the review and comment was first brought to you, I think it was November ninth, it was submitted to the state on the thirteenth, and so that's the starting of the process, and then moving forward, and then we went back and forth, and there's four addendums, and that ended up being, completing it, and then the last thing that came was the approval by the commissioner, and that's what we looked for and at the end, and so, I'm trying to find that. But the question that the commissioner had was the two things, and that was, one was, question one, there was, that was not an issue with it, they said that, and then question number two was the athletic complex, and, and so we went back and forth in talking about that and determined was that, well, that's why the board, why you put that question number two, because you weren't sure, you know, what you wanted to do, but the, but yet we had groups that are people that wanted to see it moved out to the other site, so, so to respond to that, then we had decided to put it on the ballot as a question two and let the voters decide. And so that's what the, the decision was, and so after that discussion, and then the commissioner came with, with the review and comment, the approval on January fifth, and it says, based on the department's analysis of the school district's higher documentation and other pertinent information from sources of the Minnesota Department of Education, the Commission of Education provides a positive review and comment. And so that's what you're looking for when, when you get done with this document, it's fifty pages, and so, and then the final is, is in there, so, and they explain that, but they look for different things in the proposal, one is that they look at, does the district have a student population that fits this facility? And so they look for square footage and number of students, and, and so that's one thing they look for, and the second main thing ended with the district, do you have the tax base to support it? And both of those came back positive, and so that's why they had a positive review. I think they've kind of tightened up things with the review and comment and what they have in the past, because this, it took some different discussions and such, and so I don't know why that is, but, and we really didn't know, but, but it did get approved after the fourth time of, of adaptations, so. Any questions on that, the plan is, the complete plan is in there, all the expenditures, and so now it's ready to go to the voters. The state has accepted, if the voter has accepted, then it's a go, you start moving forward, and so that's, that's where we're at right now, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You mentioned something about the second ballot question on there, and I do have the comment and review section here that was put in the paper, and it says, they distinctly did say that the district already has an athletic complex at the existing school site in Olivia, which is functional but in need of roughly a million dollars. And they also say that they feel that it would make it difficult to consider this type of improvement, building the new one, it would be economically, it would be a hardship for the, the district, and the school district should strongly reconsider the need for a new athletic complex, so in order for the district to remain completely neutral, if you were going to put that as a second question on the ballot, I really feel that it should have been put on there, even though, or along with this, I know there's some people that want it, I don't know how you would word it, but they're saying that it would make it difficult for us to maintain that five million dollar athletic complex, I just feel that the people, we should have been a little more neutral on that, I don't know that that should have got thrown in there when they're advising you to really reconsider that.
That's why I was put on question two, is because we've got, they would like to have it, they got a group that would not, so that's why the, the coming together is, let's put it on the ballot and let the.
Well, I was just thinking that the fact is the state that wasn't economically advisable for the people that really wanted it, they could reconsider and say, hey, no.
And that's for us to do, that was what we had, when it came back, that's, that's what we took a look at, and so we could have pulled it out, or we left it in, and so we decided to do that. I'm comfortable with this simply because you're putting it out to the voters. They are the ones that will decide, and not, and not the board, and I think, I think that's giving them that option, and so, so I think it's theirs.
Well, when this goes out, let's just say this all happens, and we end up having to do this, where is the money then going to come from when we don't have the money in our budget to take care of all this stuff?
For what?
For a new field, the turf, even the school, I talked to the auditor in the city, and I, at MSBA, and I was showing him this and talking about it, and he said, I can't believe you guys are doing this, you don't really have the money there to do that. And, and I've been on board all this time, and I'm thinking, well, I was kind of thinking that, but when you have an auditor telling you that, it scares me that in the end, are we going to go back to the voters and say, okay, here we are, we can't afford this, knowing we want some more money from you to pay for operating expenses again? I mean, or maintenance, or? And, and with all, all the things that kind of went wrong, I feel, and this is, I mean, this probably isn't the time to bring it up, but I feel like we've kind of made a wrong decision here, and maybe we should just shut it down and wait till we get a little ducks in a row? Because even with the ballot thing, how, how do we know, okay, if I come to the district office and say, I want to change my ballot because what you had on there in the first thing is different than now? How are you going to find my ballot? People are frustrated with that because.
And that's something that, there, there is a process in doing that, and so the judges will take care of it, and so work it through, I'm not familiar with it because I'm not an election judge, but we hire election judges that are trained by the, by the county auditor, and we trust them, and, and I'm sorry, I get frustrated when I hear people question our election process, because I think you stay in Minnesota, I think we've got.
I don't think I question the election process, yeah.
But it's, but it's in the law.
Where's the money coming from? Where's the money going to come from? If we can't afford this, and even an auditor, the city is, at the MSBA, tell you.
What auditor?
I'm not telling you, because the last time I told you, you went to the guy's, you went to the guy's office and got Matt upset.
I did?
No, I'm not going there, but I'm just.
But I think you should listen to our auditors, and, and this has all been brought, this been two years of planning on this, it's been in front of the board, and, and you've made the decision to move forward, so the decision isn't whether to move forward, the decision has been made. And it's, and it's ready on the, every, and people are voting.
Okay, but I have a comment to make.
Yeah.
I'm, I was encouraged to do phase one training and to do the state convention stuff too, and I sat on the roundtable, and lo and behold, it was about referendums and buildings, and they were talking about plans. And so I went into the chat section and I said, well, do we get plans before the referendum or after the referendum? And there's two men that were putting it on, and they laughed, they said, you have plans before the referendum, you need to insist on a thorough plan review, you should be getting two-D and three-D renderings at the cost of maybe a thousand dollars each, not millions of dollars like Ryan was telling us the other day. He said you should be getting floor plans, sides of classrooms, and the outside of buildings, then you get three foot by five foot posters, you can distribute them throughout the community, and that makes community engagement, so people can see what they're voting for. We should have a project, project development agreement, survey tax cards, which I think you did that, but this enhances community engagement, and it shows the taxpayer what they're actually voting for. Our taxpayers don't have a clue what this building is going to look like, we can't just take someone else's word at ninety-three million dollars. And with all the miss, the little missprints and the fudges and the things that she brought up, I think this is time to put a halt to this, and we think, as you said, you've had two years of planning and we still have no plans.
And Ryan has dealt with that, he has talked to the board why. I know of two districts right now that are doing it just like we're, one is where I came from, the other one is where I live. This last week, the Hutchinson leader, they passed a year ago a referendum for the elementary, you know what's on the front page? A picture of that, and a design for the room, about one of the areas, so they're putting that plan together right now.
That's probably the final stage plans, you can come up with those, but we should have two and three-D renderings right now, conceptual plan where people can.
Ryan has dealt with that, he's explained it, and I can take it back to him.
We hired Ryan.
What?
We hired Ryan.
Yes.
He answers to us, you don't have to do this to him, he answers to us, and our taxpayers are stopping me on the street, they want to know what they're getting, and they're not saying anything, and that's. And our taxpayers are stopping me on the street, they want to know what they're getting, and they're not paying anything, and that's where you're getting the frustration. We need transparency, we just need to be open, put it out there.
But we don't know what it is right now, that's the problem. You, you got it wide open to do whatever you want with it. Yeah, I can, we can design a plan, and chances are, when it's all said and done, that's not what it's going to be.
Okay, so what happens if we come under budget and keeps that money then? Yeah, and then another thing, um, they also mentioned this too. Like when you're going through here and you have the F F E, fees, permits, and testing and contingencies. Well, under fees, permits, and testing, they said you have to make sure there's no contingencies or money on that. Because they said they're not designing this furniture anymore, and the technology, it's already been designed, so there shouldn't be any percentage on there, guess what? They're figuring a fee on there, they did the math, and it's like a million dollars worth, that shouldn't even be in there. This is what we need to go, they said we need to go line by line, these guys are telling at the state level, at the convention. We have to insist on plans, no ands, ifs, or buts, they, they cannot believe. That we are going forward with the referendum without any plan.
Then why are other schools doing it and are doing it right? Another district.
I don't really care what others.
Don't go there. What I'm saying, there's, there's everybody on this, this board right here that has gone through this process.
Mr. Branson, we have three communities out there right now that are frustrated.
You're not going to get a plan, and Ryan has explained that, he's explained it to our community meetings, and he's explained it to the board.
And we're, then we need to get rid of Ryan.
Well, I've got all the confidence in all.
I don't, you know what, at this point, I don't care.
Well, I do.
And this is the time and the place to talk about it, he said, it was very, this is very appropriate, especially when you have it in the minutes that I can bring it up.
And that's fine, but I, I mean, how much, how much more do we, how much more do you have to say? I mean, is there a lot more?
I know, so we can keep moving here in the meeting, so. I would hope you guys would want to dialogue. Want to know what your school is going to look like.
We've asked, previous board members have asked, we've asked, but we don't ever get anything.
There's a reason because it's like what Brian said, it takes teacher involvement, community involvement, and what you want it to look like. But you don't have, I, I, I've talked to people at other schools too that don't have that ahead of time.
You would build a brand new house without looking at the plans.
How many years in planning did they have, and have a layout of plans and what?
And that's with this, it'll take a year to plan.
They did that before they built it, before they had money, I mean, come on.
You know, honestly, you guys think we need to have, we need to talk to Ryan again, I mean, Ryan needs to, to help us understand this again, so.
He's done it, and he's done it more than once, but that's, we, we can have him come forward. Another district that I communicated with. A year ago in February, they passed their bond. They're pouring footings right now. He said, we took a year to plan it, and I said, did you have a plan ahead of the game? No. He said, they won't do that until the bond is passed, and architect firm comes in, and you design it, and then you. But that takes meeting after meeting, he said, we spent almost the entire summer, meaning constantly. Of developing that plan, the design, because we didn't know what it was until you got to do the whole pro, a whole building. And it took them, they spent the entire summer doing it, by the end of summer, they had their plan together. And that's when they put out bits, and so now they're pouring the.
Whole different ballgame, conceptual plans and two D and three D rendering are the first stage, the design plan is the second.
First, you got it, we designed it, what are you going to have? They take the square footage, and that's what they use, average square footage per student. And Ryan has gone over that. That's how they determine the dollar amount, and then you fit the program into it, and you're, there's going to be a lot of changes. You know, from what you're thinking now. In fact, Ryan showed a picture of the three entrances one day. And I don't know if it was here or where it was at, I picked one, and he said, why do you like that? And I said, because it's got a lot of glass in it, and it's going to match what the hospital has. But he said, you're one, the next person's going to vote against it because it's, it's too elaborate, it's not. So he said, that's what happens, and so his, their theory and the way they approach it is that. They've got to get the bond passed, and then they'll, are you an architect, and you start the planning stage. And that's the process they use, and it's school districts that are using it, and that's why, because it's such a big mammoth thing. You can do anything along with that building because it's not tied to a remodel or anything. And so you don't know what it's going to be, and it's going to get everybody together, the fam, uh, parents and community members plus. School personnel, and then you're going to just start designing it from scratch.
So when we save money in it, where does that money go? What's going to happen to that extra money?
Well, then you'll look at what option you got with it, you know. It might mean that you can design better flooring, you can design better, you can get better windows. And so I think there's, there'll be lots of options, and I know that happened with McGrane. Uh, after their bond bid, and so they're going to take those dollars and put in the flooring and windows.
They're supposed to have a project development agreement, anticipated profit for the developer, work scopes, it packages for big, I mean. The list goes on and on, these, these guys were, I called them afterwards, and I spoke to each one independently.
Where, where are they from, who? Who are they? I don't know.
Does it matter if you know them or not? You can contact the state and find out.
No, I, you can work with me. If you've got somebody to resource, let me know, and I will, I will be a resource.
It's public knowledge, and you can go on a website and look at it tomorrow. There's two guys that run, and I talked to both of them, one is from.
It was just one of the roundtables on.
And it's easy to find, and I'll have to, I didn't bring my, my state attorney book with me, so. But I, I make a motion that we, um, put a halt to this right now, and we look over the plans and. I think Mr. Branson, I, and probably myself, and the board members should talk to these guys from the state.
When Ryan talked those two meetings ago, one, I don't know if Dr. Ryan asked them. Okay, with everything rising, is this going to go up? And he said, absolutely not, because we have way more than enough in here right now. Why would we go to that point for having way more than enough? I don't, that scares me, and this is going to be a detrimental effect for our community, when you talk to these people in the community. Okay, it's not just farmers, it's, it's your local businesses, you got Brian Bowden over there. If people start even telling because they can't afford it, his, his list of people are going to go down. I mean, there's massive thrill, I mean, they're going to end up paying more taxes. You got Napa, you've got the, somebody, you got the drinking, these people are already struggling. Maybe we need to look back at it and take a second look and hang on, hold on.
The decision has been made, you've got. Can you listen to what I have to say? This has all been brought through all the committees, and the state department, and it's all been approved. And so now, the time is for, that decision has been made. And so now we're to a point that it's going to the voters, and it's up to the voters to make that decision.
Well, I make a motion that we put this off for a bit, so we can come back and, and we look, because right now, the voters. There are people telling me there's too much money, there's a discrepancy with the information that's been put out there.
Are we going to make a motion during your report, or should this wait until the business, and it probably should have been added when we approve the agenda? To be honest, I mean, just.
Really, it's an agenda I'm to vote to, because the action's already been taken.
Okay, there's no way you can actually even do that, and you, I mean, you can't go to the state, and they were worried.
You know what I'm saying, I'm not saying it to be disrespectful, I'm just saying. If one company, this is how they do it, and other people do it, another does it this way. Not necessarily that, that, that this is the wrong protocol, it's a different protocol.
Okay, so we'll call it a different protocol. And what do we do when we don't know what kind of score we're getting, when we don't know, and Ryan said himself just the other week. The wellness center is enhanced, signs will deliver, there's best intentions to build it, but it's not a done deal. And the farmer with the extra acres, there's no purchase agreement there either, you don't have that science to deliver either, there's so many what if. You have, you don't have a clue, that farmer hasn't agreed to anything.
You have a lot of old that ends. But what scares me is somebody come back and at us with the discrepancies, that's what I don't want, because they can come back at us personally and the board, and that. That bothers me because we wanted to do it right, and with the discrepancies not making us look very. But they are not going to care how you and we are when it comes down to the wire, Jamie, that's what I'm saying.
Like, what you want, if you're going to put something forward, don't you want to be the best thing you're going to accomplish to get community buy-in? I was just saying, what if you want a hundred percent community buy-in instead of fifty-one percent?
I don't think you're ever going to get a hundred percent.
Exactly, but you.
I think they've done a good job of getting the information out, the people who have the other information, and the people. They decide, it's just, it's a simple.
It's all set and, and move forward, and if the people then voted down, if that's, that's the people. Let the people decide.
You know, for, for the board, then you just go back to the drawing board, and you do what you have to do. It's not, it's not a one-shot deal. There's very, very few who go in one, you know, in one vote, very, very rarely does it happen. But you, right now, they've just done so much work over the last two years, I wasn't here for it. But they put in so much time and had so many of these conversations, and got over so many things. Now it's to the point where they moved to the point where it's going to an election, and then the people in the communities, they decide. And they, they'll tell you if they think, well, we need more information, or if we don't need more information.
So you, as a board, feel confident bringing something in that's flawed, that's not a complete package that should be. Where you don't even know what you're getting, you feel confident with that?
Do I trust other people doing their jobs competently? Yes, I do.
Well, we trusted it, and it didn't come out right, so what did we do? We trusted Ryan, and the pack of the numbers that came out were not right, so the, the one number. So it's like, you trust them, okay, you can trust somebody else so much, but if things keep falling into place that aren't correct.
Okay, should I go on to my report? Referendum review, I wanted to mention that, that, had that. Earlier, and it was a. I think it was very positive, I felt, and I, when I say positive, I'm not saying everybody's for it or against it. What I'm saying is I think people respected each other, they asked questions, good questions, and the answers were given back and forth, and then dialogue went. And so I think that was very positive and, and good to see, and so a lot of information was given out. And after that meeting, there was a lot of questions that were, were answered afterwards, and so that was good. And I think I had one family call me the day after and thanked me. And I really appreciate that, and he said, my wife and I watched it for an hour and a half, and I learned so much. And he said, thank you for doing that, and they were, he didn't say where, how he's going to vote, I don't, that doesn't, that's the issue. Um, so I had a individual talking to me today that, but very certain. He was, was not going to vote for it because the election process, because of the cost and so forth. And so I had all, and that's fine, I said, that's okay, it's okay to vote no, that's your choice. And so please respect that, I will respect it. And so you can have a difference of opinion, but the majority rules, and that's why we have to do it. And, and it really bothers me when the elections, because of all that we went through this past year. With every, whether it's a county, state, school, district, national, that's sad. That we are going through that, Mike, our Mark, up at the county auditor. The amount of time he spends answering questions that have been answered over and over and over. And he spent a whole hour the other day, going to write me an email, and he, and he said, I spent a whole hour with a person questioning. The election process, and, and I, that bothers me. I, I think that's, that's something that our country needs to come back together, and, and this is a prime example right here. Where are we coming to? Are we thinking of people, others, working together as a team? I don't think so, and so. I kind of, and Mark shared that with me, I really felt bad. I said, you know, why, why are people so disrespectful? You've got a job to do, you're going to, I trust you that you'll do the best job you can. And, and I think he does, and so we need to trust each other, I trust Ryan. He's been through this more than once, his company has been through it more than once. I have colleagues that are working on building projects that I communicate with often, they're doing the same, going through the same process we are. And so have confidence that it'll work, the thing is, when we're said and done, I want a building that's, you're going to be proud of. It's got everything in it you want. It's not a tin can, it's not a cord, a cardboard box. It's going to be a, the end price is going to be something that's going to enhance student learning, that's what our goal is. And that's what Ryan's goal is with it, it's not going to be piecemeal together. And that all takes people working together, and, and that's his goal, and, and I think it's I C S' s goal. And I will say that about I C S, for every project I've been in, they design a program that fits your district, not somebody else's. And that's, and I really feel that way, so. But with review, we, uh, coming out of that, one thing was the, the credit. Tax credit, and so I got that on the gen, I'll explain more about that at that time. But that was one issue, and then the other, another issue I want to touch on was, was the, the. Talk of, or the thought of consolidating with neighboring districts, and so that's something that had been on the table and. And I've gone to neighbors or neighbors to the east, I've been working, I worked with three different super tenants since I've been here. And so I communicate with them often, if there's anything we can pay or share with, we'll do that. And we, right now, we've got some sport teams. A suggestion I brought up earlier this fall, if it would ever develop, would be community ed. I've talked to Derek about it, who's a community ed director here, and I said, is there a way? We could take the three schools right along two twelve here and have a one community ed program. And so we talked about that, and basically, I didn't get a lot of input from the other districts, so. That's kind of, I still think that's something that, that the future, we could do, so.
Sharing and hearing, I'd like, before we do that.
Can I just finish?
Yeah, and while, okay, go ahead.
Okay, and then what had, what come out of that was, I had scheduled a meeting with the board chair and the superintendent of B L H S. And I asked Jill to join that discussion, they came. And I asked Jill to join that discussion, they came over here, that was a long time of coming. And with COVID, we couldn't get together, and then Jill decided to have surgery, so. But so, we, so the four of us got together and the question is consolidation. And so. Consolidation is more than just coming together and splitting everything, that doesn't, that isn't the way it works, and so I've been involved with more than one. But coming out of that meeting, Jill, maybe you wanna talk a little bit about that?
I just wanna give a little background, okay? I contacted Alan Schmidt back in April of twenty nineteen. And I just had a, just a short conversation with him and just said, hey. You know, I'm hearing a lot from our community, and people are interested, I don't know if you're, what you're hearing in yours, but could we get our boards together? And he's, well, I don't know, I'll have to go and talk to my boards, could we please do and get back? He didn't get back to me. I know then, Mr. Bransway and other board members have also kind of made some connections and really, no one ever. Said yes or no, or ever got back to them, um, Mr. Bransway, like you said, has talked to three separate. Superintendents that BLHS has had. And I know that earlier this fall, we were going to meet. Um, and then it just didn't happen, so when Dr. Mortensen called. Uh, we were able to set this up and it 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 wasn't. To take the place of the pairing and sharing committee, that's not what this was for, that's not what the intention was. Uh, we're just hearing more and more people wanting to to know, you know, where are both school districts in this, so that's kind of what the. The idea was, and so we have a prepared statement that both boards are going to be reading tonight. That BLHS also has a board meeting tonight, so I would like to go ahead and read the statement, so people can hear it. Good evening, BLHS, BLHS board board members. We'll just be bold, cause they're in their own meeting. So on January fifteenth, twenty twenty one, BLHS and Bold Administration Superintendent Dale Bransway and Superintendent Dr. Michelle Hortons. Met with board chairperson Alan Schmidt and Johansson. The purpose of this meeting was to talk about how the two school districts can work together as neighboring school districts. School district representatives from both districts have come up with the following statement. BLHS and Bold School Districts have determined that both districts will remain in constant communication with each other. While district representatives agree that this, that there will be no consolidation plans to be discussed at this time. We do believe the cooperation will continue to take place. Shared programming, possible activity, cooperation, community education, et cetera, are avenues. We may continue to explore as needs arise in either district. We are proud of our strategic plans, our identities, and the and the vision that we have for our students within our individual district. Superintendents from both districts are in continuous communication and enjoy working together to help both districts. These communications will remain intact and any information that needs to be shared with our boards and communities will be relayed during our public meetings. So that comes from BLHS representatives Alan Schmidt. Who was their board chair and Dr. Michelle Mortenson, their superintendent, and then myself as board chair and Mr. Bransway as superintendent. So that that is the statement, it it it, we're not. Taking the place of pairing and sharing committee, this was a meeting that has been long in. In planning and just finally happened, and it just happened to happen after the counter regr- organizational meeting, it wasn't, we didn't talk specific. Things that we could, you know, we didn't talk, well, let's, you know, get together, we're in. Whatever activity, we didn't, it was just really kind of like, we we realized that we need to keep. Our communications open, where are you guys, what are you thinking? That kind of thing that we had not done before and we left it. Mr. Schmidt asked if we could maybe talk about getting the board together, just just to meet each other and talk. And be opening communication, and I said, yes, let me know when you guys want to do that and we'll set it up. So that is, that is what was going on, there's no. No plan to take anybody out of the picture here.
Well, I I just wanted to mention that because. I am Sandy, we're just elected to that. At the organizational meeting, and then you guys went ahead and had this meeting. I still don't understand why we weren't involved in that meeting and you told me in our conversation. That BLHS didn't wanna be swallowed up.
And that that is exactly what they said.
And why would they, why would they feel like they're being swallowed up?
Because that is how schools, I mean, I I've not been involved in it, well, I guess, I was a student, one goal consolidated. But that is how schools feel, maybe a smaller school feels like.
Came that nothing was decided. And the thing was that came out of it was just there's an understanding. Of where we're at right now, both districts. If you're gonna pair or share, then both parties have to be in agreement. And you gotta be willing to give and take. And we're, and neither district is at that right now.
And why, why are we not at that point that we wanna give and take?
Because of our plans that we're moving forward with right now.
Okay, but for Plan B, why would you not leave that door open?
The door is open, the door is open.
Well, then why, because we've been there and said, okay, if this fall falls through, we want, we're interested in widening our tax base, maybe we can have even a.
But then they would have to be agreeable to that.
For some reason, they're feeling like they're gonna be swallowed up and they don't wanna be swallowed up. And so that that's coming from you, Jill.
I I I know, and it was that.
It was, and we're not gonna, I don't think we intended to say what each other said, it was just our general.
Point is that we were elected to the committee and I don't like the fact that when people are elected to a committee and you go ahead and have a meeting without it, we should have been invited to that. Well, it had been told, you guys already knew what was gonna happen, you know what was gonna happen, it would have been nice to just say, hey, you're on this committee, but hey. Together with them to have a meeting, just. Both chairs and whatever, instead of, oh, so we get an email and say, oh, by the way, we did this, and then you kinda feel like you got.
It was not. It was not ever meant to be people not being informed, I guess, I just thought after the meeting would be nice to inform you of what happened.
I thought pairing and sharing had to do with like pairing and sharing classes, I could be wrong.
No, I don't think it's exactly that. It's going to be the administration that is going to put on bulk of those, anything pairing and sharing wise. So you'll be included, but it's going to be the administration and, you know, whatever it's it's including is going to do that work.
And the thing is, I had talked. Superintendents talked to superintendents. And I've shared that many times over. That I talk to my neighbors and I talk to my other colleagues. And I learn a lot from others. And this is something that has been a real struggle with everybody involved with Bold and BLHS is, why not? Well. It takes for you to come together and do a pairing, a sharing or consolidation, it's gotta be where both parties are ready. They are not at this point. They are not ready, we're moving with the building project. So neither one was start at that point. And that's where the ones that have, are on the board. This is what has gone through for the last two, two and a half years. We've done this, we've looked at this, we've looked at different options. And it's, it's, there's a lot of information out there that we worked with.
What did the steering committee kept reiterating over and over and over?
Group of them did, but not the steering committee.
We were, yeah, it was the steering committee, but again, they have to be. Wanting to do it.
Right, but you have to be an open minded and know that.
Mr. Hanson, oh gosh, I don't see, I don't know, I mean, I contacted him right when I joined and asked him. Um, where his board was at, it was probably not my right, he was a super, I know Dave. So I did contact him, I also did contact one of their board members, and they weren't interested.
Well, and then I happen to know of people that were at those board meetings and talked to firsthand, and they were, they said anything's on the table. They were willing to dialogue.
That's what they did, was they dialogue this.
Yeah, I I.
Just find out where they're at right now, in the future, it may change.
And that's what, and that's what we did, we just had a dialogue, that's all we did. And this is where both districts are at. There was no decisions made, we weren't.
It was not a pairing and sharing.
You know, with their turnaround in administration too, it's difficult to have a consistent schedule, but I'm very glad he goes now. Thank you, and honestly, from here on out, if there will be. Opportunities for pairing and sharing, you two would definitely be on board.
I'd like to get the boards together first to meet each other and, you know, and talk. So. All right, I'll move on to M S B A Leadership Conference.
I don't know if you people have taken the Thursday mornings to. I was able to do some of the first one, but the second one, this past week, I was normally I could. Could watch it, but I thought the first, the the openings talk was good. And I think it was the timing was good. And so it's covered, it's, to me, it was very timely of our schools and all schools across the state. Due to the pandemic, what we're dealing with, and so what we're experiencing. Talking about distant learning, talking about socioeconomic status. The educational level, aids and gender, all indicators. And we're struggling with that now. Because of the position we're in, um, and and so I I think she really did a. A good job of that, sharing those concerns and how we can support each other. She again is talking about supporting staff, students and parents. I had a conversation this morning with a parent of of who's got children in our school. And she had a lot of questions, and so she came in, but it was really neat visiting with her because I I felt that. She had the right focus. And she, she's a stay at home mom. And she wants to work with her classroom teachers and I strong, I encourage her to keep doing it. Right now, you're in the minority. But I said, you know, if your kids are gonna do well, they need your support and your guidance. Um, and so I relayed that to her and I talked about this, how important that is. That support for every child in every, in the school. And so we really had a good, and she had a lot of good questions and tough questions, not easy ones to answer, but. They were good and, um, so. I, my background is is a, really is where I spent most of my time is in the middle school, which mostly, you know. And so I think that's a tough age for kids. And so she's got one that's in middle school, and so we talked about that. And so we really had a good one, but, um, anybody, any others that you wanna talk about or mention that you had an opportunity, go ahead.
Um, I was adding on the strategic planning during challenging times and Gail Gilman, uh, the director, she spoke, so did. Meyer and Bruce Lombard. This is an, um. I thought this was really good, they said, you're always supposed to have your strategic plan with your air to some of the board meeting. And they said, you should revise it, just not annually, but probably more often, especially during difficult times that we're facing right now during COVID. And they said, you should adapt and revisit those goals during difficult times and readjust for the short term. And I feel very strongly about this right now with the kids that are struggling in grades five through twelve. And I shared with Mr. Vincent this evening and he took a picture of this, but, um. There was, um, some really cool stuff on there, they gave about distance learning. Virtual oppo- opportunities for teachers and student growth. Had to do with being agriculturally literate and how farming planted the seeds for the internet. And the seeds of civilization farming did that, and growing your own food changed everything, brought in division of labor villages, civilization group, innovation group. But anyway, there's virtual. Things that the kids can do even at home now with the teachers, they have lessons, materials, resource packets for the teachers. I mean, there's a farm camp, field trip, all cool virtual stuff. There is an egg made for each grade through high school. Um, hyper docs is the online interactive share with students activities, a book garden. They have like, right now, they're learning about water online and, uh, one cool. Thing, I I'm sorry, I get a little excited. Um, right now, they're featuring a greenhouse town, and what they do is, um, the kids are tasked with creating a greenhouse with all their own items at home. And then you can video and screen them in class and decide, when we have kids that are failing, we're trying to pump the incentives to get them excited and, and. I'm think the teachers are doing great, it's just that maybe just to get a little more excited than the same. Stuff that did you get integrate some of that and then you talked about, I don't wanna. So I'm not gonna take that away from that, so do you? But anyway, um, like I said, the whole strategic planning, which. I'm not gonna beat the, a dead horse here, or it's not a dead horse, but the whole thing about, I I feel strongly too about putting it. On hold with the reference, I just see right now with the kids that are failing and during these difficult times. We gotta revisit this, maybe start focusing on the kids and academics, we're already past first semester, we have. These kids don't get to do first semester over. This is a very difficult time in your lives, this should be first and prime, we we have to. They said our goal, our first, most important thing is learning models, distant learning should be our most important thing we wanna work on, is student achievement. And I just feel that's where our heads need to be, we get, we should just. But let's just put things on hold and get back into this until we get these kids.
So where do you see the board fitting into that, though? Because we have staff. I mean, we have Mr. Mr. Branson, we have two principals, we, you know, we have staff that 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 is their job. So how does, how, how do you, where do you see your role as a board member in that? I mean, supporting it for sure, yeah, of course. But like, I mean, are we gonna come and do the work, I mean, I I don't know, that's my question, I guess, because. I I'm not going to step on their toes, they know what they're doing. But, you know, definitely, I I like the enthusiasm with the, um, your examples and, yeah.
I I think I kinda dropped that, what you said about that strategic plan is very, is important. It isn't meant to be sitting on a shelf someplace. We didn't meet last spring, and my goal is always, we meet in the spring. And evaluate and prepare for, and then fall, we meet the set goals for the year. We didn't do it last spring because of COVID, we didn't get together. What happened this fall? Again, COVID and that was our focus. But it needs to come back out and I think they've, uh, they're kinda using that same format that we got there. Jeff Wilson was the one that brought that.
We are doing strategic.
Yeah, they are reporting and I'm glad that they're doing that. Cause that says that they're looking at that plan. And we have to keep it in front of us, but it needs to be re, it's it's getting time, and so I. I don't, I've never worked with MSBA on that, Jeff Wilson was the one that started that, he was at Saint Peterson before he retired. And he started that format, and then he started working with MSBA with that, and he's turned it over to them, so. I'm kinda interested to know what they're doing with it, I guess, I, it sounds like they're moving forward and.
They're, um, um, joining forces with the D N R and and everything, I guess, Jill, to answer your question. Maybe as a board, we need to do more homework to make sure that we have, we can. Maybe we do the investigating out here and bring new ideas back to these guys and maybe we do. I don't know what our budget is, cause I don't have all that information, but maybe. Make sure we have plenty of operational funds. In the learning department for these kids to get through this COVID, that should be our main focus right now. And energy is to make sure this is fully funded, these kids are excelling. And I I think our kids, like you keep saying, the kids are doing really great, but we don't want anybody to fall behind now, and there are parents saying their kids are failing, some of them have. Kids that have done really well. But the, if the kids are just, it it's just not there, it's like.
I think I would like to have the principals address that, because I think. They've got a group of staff that are really working and focusing on what we can do, we started a. You know, Jim can talk more about that later, but I think that is a concern of our staff and they are, and that's what I think. As a board, I think you need to hear what they are doing, because they're doing, the staff is doing a lot of extra. Uh, and I talked with Brett, every time he comes in my office, he keeps telling me what his staff is doing. I mean, going above and beyond. And I know that Jim's staff is doing that too, and I, but that, that's important, that strategic plan is a guide, that's your roadmap, and so we need to. But I do think a lot of things you've got there, Tracy, you're talking about are. Are things that our principals are focusing on right now and guiding their staff to. Really, they, cause they're concerned about, and where we started. Hiring, uh, bringing students that are failing in and getting extra help. And now they're looking at, in the hybrids in the high school there, and and Jim was talking about that, I don't know where they're at, but sure, but. Of having kids that are struggling coming in every day instead of the other day. So there's those types of things, yes, we've got to, and and what I think. The board is, it's a good thing for, when you go, especially MSB, it gives you those tools, and I. And bring them back in and share them with your team and and be part of that. You're a part of the school. Uh, you're important. You may, you you decide on policy. So uh thanks and. And so that's why, and I think the M S B A works hard and. I don't know if it's if it's me, I'm getting tired of virtual. And so I have a hard time when you find other things you have to do. So. One thing that another one that I shared was and probably. I don't know, Theresa, if this is the one you're talking about, the virtual classroom with eggs, the department of egg. Um, I was gonna give that to Jim.
Yeah.
Because I think we've got a new egg teacher.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's she she we we give her the tools. I think uh we go places. So it was good. Okay, anybody else? I got a couple of others.
Legislative update, let's move on to that.
They're just starting, uh but today the governor put out his plan and so. I didn't have an opportunity to listen to it, uh but I read a little bit about what the M R E put out about it and. Um, he's got seven points. Uh, for his plan. You know, I I I thought it had more meat to it, but I think it's in the planning stage. So I think that's probably why, but he's. He's he's got some good points that he's gonna bring up, but. He's looking for action of students during and after COVID. That's a big concern now and looking at reforming school to financing. To expand the opportunity for students in greater Minnesota. And to build the most qualified and diversity teaching workforce in the nation. He's saying a lot of getting support to classroom teachers. Um, and so working with them to do these extra things in the classroom to carry them that the kids have much farther. So. I think he's uh he's an educator, heart is and his wife is too, so. I'm looking for some good things, but again. There's a lot of hurdles to come too. Financing is a big issue. Uh, they a year ago, they they started a task force to look at school finance. Public screening. So I'm looking for that to come out now. Uh, the results are here and so what is that gonna involve? But I think that was the big thing today is the governor's report and he's gonna come out with more information. In the next few days and work with it. So, okay, I'll leave it there.
All right, we're gonna move on to the elementary principals' report. And if Mr. Benson has anything you'd like to add, you can, you can see, I mean, the the principal reports are. Our strategic plan. Focus.
Um, we've got a couple of things coming up. We've got our fast testing. Which is an assessment based program for us. It helps in our title program. Uh, so that'll be coming here the start of February. Um, it also helps with small groups in our classroom, uh with our guided reading, which allows students. To work more on their level. They still get the core core aspect of the class. But students that are struggling or students that are, you know, achieving a lot, we can, we can push them as well. Parent teacher conferences are coming up here February eleventh and twelfth. Um, they're gonna be very important for us, especially at the elementary level. Uh, we. We'd love to see the families. Unfortunately, it's probably gonna be virtual again. But we have, we had some pretty good success with that this year. For this fall. Crazy to think that's already happened. I met or I I had a uh. What I call the leadership team. We met here in the summer and there was one thing that I wanted to relay to our. Our kids, our students as we move forward through this year because. In reality, we've been in COVID for ten months now. I mean, it started basically, we shut down last March. And the teachers have been doing an amazing job. Uh, hasn't been easy. Uh, the families have done an amazing job for us. We've had our struggles, we've been able to get through it. It's been great to have the students back in the building. Well, case six, we've been back in for. Basically, this is our start of our second week for grades three through six. Uh, and then K, this is our third week, K two is our third week back. So that's been great to see, but the one thing that I I really challenge and I have our students that are teacher reflect on every day. Is win the day. We can't control anything else, but we can control what we do. And how we do it. Um, so the one thing that we do and that the parents can see it through their seesaw app that we use or. Or sometimes the class do whatever, as a group discussion, how did I win the day? And that's how I I finish my morning announcements every day. And you'll see some of the kids come up to me in in the hallway, hey, Mr. Benson, this is how I won the day. So that's, that's our biggest thing for us right now. Um, because we can't control what's going on out there. We can control what's in here. Any questions for me?
All right, Mr. Menton.
All right, yeah, yeah, we've got the end of the quarter or end of the semester here just passed. And we did, we've been doing a lot of discussions amongst this faculty about students that have have been failing classes. Uh, we've looked at a lot of different things that to to get kids passing their classes and we did. Open up the gym right before school or right before Christmas break and then. For the two weeks after that, we got those kids invited them in, kids that were failing courses. So that they could come in, be in the gym and in many cases go to their actual classes with their teachers. Uh, then the next week we had those same kids coming and going, following their whole schedule with their teachers. Uh, we successfully got a lot of failing grades up to passing. And we're very, very happy about that. We talked about, do we need to do something extra? Uh, we discussed maybe changing the the grading scale to be a little bit more forgiving. And after a lot of discussion, we really determined that the the. The kids that have really decided to 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 push through this have passed. The the ones that are failing classes really kind of. Uh, they they didn't put in a lot of effort. So what we've decided to do instead, uh, we're going to. We're gonna be looking at doing a summer program and seeing if we can find money for that, of course. Uh, but putting together a summer program where they can earn back some of that credit so that they don't end up getting retained. Uh, because board policy is that if seventh and eighth grade, if you fail more than. Three out of the four core classes, you do have to repeat that grade up. So. Uh, we wanna, we wanna do what we can to make sure that doesn't happen because all that's doing is. Doubling, not doubling, but creating quite a bit bigger class sizes for teachers next year and. And it's never good when you have to retain someone. Um, it's only happened a few times since I've been here, but uh, you know, this is a, this is a little bit different situation. We. We uh, it it's been hard. We understand it's been hard for everybody. Um, I like to use the analogy of the Titanic, you know, if you're. If we're all on the Titanic, we've all got to decide. Are we gonna swim or are we gonna sit? And you you gotta be able to fight to keep this going. Um, so hopefully, hopefully we're creating a culture of fighting to 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 succeed, so. Um, but for those that, for those that maybe ended up sinking, uh, we will have. We're gonna look at ways that we can fix that this summer. So, oh, and conferences, you have to recommend some conferences are coming up. We do plan on using Zoom again. Uh, the feedback we got last fall was actually that it wasn't a terrible way to do conferences. And I think there were, there were some parents that were able to zoom in that normally wouldn't have come to conferences. So we're really happy to see that. And uh, yeah, so. Uh, kind of like our our meetings here, we we get a lot more people that are willing to zoom in. Uh, to a meeting rather than a attendant person. And I don't think that has to do with COVID. I think it's a lot of it has to do with the. The the ease it is to join from your, the comfort of your home. So. Uh, so we're, we'll try that again and. And I was talking, I don't remember if it was Sandy or Teresa, I think it was Sandy earlier, just, you know, this. This is always, I think, gonna have some sort of impact on how we educate our kids going into the future. Uh, it could very well be that there's always some sort of virtual option. Um, there's, there's high schools in the state like Houston. That's, that's all they did for a long time is just a virtual school. So. Maybe this is something that we can look at continuing into the future in some way, form or another. So. Uh, any questions for me? I don't know, they don't know. Yep, there there's a our first official build. Night is tonight, so. Hopefully they did something with not be there. I'm I'm the one, I'm the adult that knows the least, so. Very good hands with great. So.
I just want to roll off a little bit what we had talked about because. We earlier we had said, you know, some kids learn better at home. They do because you have frustrations at school. And some kids learn better when they're at school with and around people. So in yeah, future wise, maybe it would be open and say, do either or, let us know which way you're going. I mean, but. It might be an option. At least they have the option.
There are, there are a few kids that that not, not a lot, but there are a few that have excelled with this, so. And maybe that's, maybe it's anxiety and they don't have to worry about that while they're while they're at home, but uh. Still, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's not a great substitute for being in the room with the teacher, but. For those that have difficulty functioning that way, it's, it's been a blessing for a handful.
Thanks. All right, moving on to activities reports. Uh, Mr. Plan, if you have anything to add or if anyone has any questions for him.
I. I don't have anything to add. There's a lot, probably more than normal in my report. Because there's a lot of different things going on right now. You know, we're dealing with uh the limits for COVID with athletics. Fan limitations, um bless Brittany's heart, she spends most of her day every day on trying to figure out who's getting into what game and send lists of fans to. Opposing schools and trying to communicate how many we get for the next upcoming game. Um, you know, she's been really spending a lot of time on that lately. But we're moving. We've got kids in the gym. We're in a much better place than we were a month ago. So.
I got a question here. What has changed in the gym situation? Does it look like now we're going to the armory?
We.
And we didn't do that before, but we haven't, we still haven't stayed alone in gyms, correct?
Traditionally, we have had boys basketball, junior high boys basketball starts in November. And ends the first or second week of January. Girls' basketball, junior high starts the first or second week of December and goes through February. Since they're both running at the exact same time this year. Normally in that month and a half or five weeks that overlap, we cancel a number of practices because we want to have a space for them. Since we have to run the entire thing at the same time this year, we've rented the armory on. Eight nights, basically Wednesdays, and then there are a couple other nights that have been thrown in there. So that we can get one extra practice a weekend for those kids, just so they're not, otherwise like this week we would have had. The junior high girls would have had two nights of no practice, three games and they wouldn't have had a practice the entire week. Uh, or the boys would have had two games and one night of practice and been canceled twice. This allows us to slide one extra practice a weekend. By using that facility, so we're not canceling quite as often due to the lack of the gym.
What does it cost then?
Um, it is a hundred and fifty dollars for an eight hour day, so we get four practices down there for a hundred and fifty bucks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Plant. All right, school board report. Um, all right. This would be the time we talked about any, if anybody's committees have met. You know, typically. School board committees. They're posted committee lead-ins and so if anybody's had any of those, please uh. I'd like to elaborate on any details for anybody. You guys pool board?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could, if there aren't any school board committee reports, you can move on to the pool board reports and you guys can talk.
The pool board, um, this was the first meeting I've ever been to for the pool board, so. Uh, Tom Calhoun was elected as the chairman of the pool board. There's two people, two representatives from the city that are on it. And then Jamie and I are on it and I believe Teresa is. Alternate, isn't it? I believe that's one.
Yeah.
Um, and so we go and we make decisions, but we don't. We decided to, we voted on, uh, do we continue to pay the employees at the pool, even though the pool's been closed? Well, we don't have any money in the game. The the city is paying for the complete pool function. Right now, even though we get half of the people on the board. We have no skin in the game at all. So we say.
Sure.
What do you guys think? You wanna pay them? Yeah, we think we should. So we paid this, the the students that are staff members, at least some hours. To help out and they have paid them in la- uh, last year as well to help them out because they're missing out on their job money that they don't have. Uh, they retained Tracy as um. Uh, how did they state it? She's, she's kind of, she's gonna stick around and help out even though she's gonna start working for the city. City stole her from the pool, so she's going to there. Uh, but she's willing to stay on to see what the, what the future of the pool holds. Just in the fact that uh what kind of programs they can do. So she's trying to, as you can see in her report. Uh, they're doing things like they're having some open swims, but they have to keep people separated. Uh, orcas are starting to have some meetings with their. Committees or their board on discussing it. I I had told Tom Calhoun was my neighbor and so I had talked to Tom at times in the alley just about the pool. And uh. I wasn't a huge advocate of it because I had a pool once myself and I know that you just put money into a pool. They're a lot of fun and it's a great time, but it's just a lot of money. Tom said to me uh at this meeting and kind of turned it around for me is, he said, we have a pool. And we live in Minnesota where there's ten thousand lakes and rivers and everything else. There's no reason why we should let this pool go. And not have every kid know how to swim that comes through our school. And so last year Tracy and Jan Yanki were working on a program mostly with the higher elementary. Uh, to put that as part of the FIA curriculum. To make them teach, but then it came up to March and then it had to stop because it's cool stuff. So. That's some of the things they're looking at. She's got programs and stuff set up, but now she wants to get back and W S I and everything else, but. That was our meeting.
All right, thank you.
She is a good person in that position. She's a real advocate, yeah.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
And she puts in a lot of hours and so.
All right, moving on to new business, egg school credit updates.
Just an update, that was a discussion point at our our forum and I just want to touch base with it because I've done. Quite a bit of work on it since then and more than before, uh, the forum anyway, so. But everybody I've talked to is very confident in the program and they feel it's. The legislature is very supportive. It's a bipartisan bill. And to change it would require the House, the Senate and the governor. All would have to agree to it. So there it's pretty, I think it's pretty well set. It was a tax equalizer between the landowners and the metro really. And we brought some city money out to the metro and I think are out to the outstate and that was. That was a real benefit. And M R E, uh, both the lobbyists that work with them, I've had a conversation with both of them. Fred Nolan is one of them and and he retired now. But uh, and Sam Olset is a newer one that's working with them, so. So I had good conversations with them about it and they they gave me the background, which I'd known some of it with it, but. Uh, they think it's a, it's a good thing and spreads the cost of buildings. And I think what you saw before this went in that. School districts were in the position bold is in right now. They didn't, they had a hard time just maintaining. And they did not have an opportunity to fix or to replace. And I think that's what uh, that took a long time to get that message through the legislature. And so uh, there's bipartisan legis- legislation, like I said, and. Um, and Senator Lang shared that the Senate majority is very much in in favor of it. He did not see it changing with the Senate. And it's a statewide pool. And 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 he has not heard anything about uh any other change for it, so. Both he and Representative Miller talked very supportive of the of the egg to school tax cut. And so there's a lot of support for it across the state. Not only farmers, but egg. Not only farmers, but egg industry, they said was really jumped. On and, and really supported it, and so, so I think it's, it's pretty safe to, to say, but. You know, the question at the forum was that, well, what if they change? Well, the legislature has that got that power in any. But then they have to do that, they have to then come back to their constituents and, and, and share with them. And so I think it's, it would be a tough sell to change it, and so I think it's pretty, pretty safe that it would be there, and. I have not heard any opposite or any other than that since the forum, and so. Nobody has brought anything opposite that. Talking with the financial people involved in the district, they say the same thing. And so I think it's pretty safe. So I think we can. The tax credit that is listed in, in our flyers, that's all put out by Baird Financial. And so that's, that's all there, so that's for anybody to determine. The impact of their individual properties. Farmers have asked me, well, what about this acreage or that acreage, and you have to put it in there because it all has different values. And your tax basis, that's what your taxes are based on, the value of the lands. So I think that's, looks very favorable as far as the district, and so. Till they came with this, I think it was very tough for a rural school district to. Generate dollars to fix these buildings, and that's the state that we got into. And so, so I think that's why we're seeing the change.
I feel that. Even with those comments, what Randy Church is saying, there is a fear out there with the farmers. This is unsettling times, and he's been down that road before, and so his fear is legitimate, and I just wanna put that out there that. We, we do have farmers that are still, even with that being in there. Not sold on it, so.
Yeah, I, and, and I had farmers share that with me, and they've been upfront with me, and I, I hear that same, same thing, so.
I have a question, I'm just curious, when I, when you're listening to that, maybe I'm totally off base with this, but when Randy had brought up at that, the public meeting. I thought that was like a totally different entity where they were like investing in which this is, with the wish they don't have to vote to vote to draft that. Right, but I, maybe I'm wrong on that.
It's a completely different entity.
Where that they could just say, okay, guess what, pay farmers, you're investing in this, and now we're taking that away. Where this is like, the legislation would actually have to go to vote to take that.
And you also, you know, with this. You know, people in the. Communities are investing in a building now too. So even if that would change, you're still, they've got a building there that you're paying for, and that is your, that's your investment. And so I think we gotta remember that too, that's a little different than, than what had happened with the other one. It's, it's apples and oranges, and so what happened, you feel bad about it, and but. But that was an investment that went, went south. So, but, you know. Again, you're going to the voters to raise taxes. Is that a popular thing? No, it isn't.
No, for education, the only tax that we have to vote on, that's what I'm with.
That's what I, that's what I, that's what I complain about, they said, you know, to me, it's the most important thing. That we have in the state of Minnesota, but it's the one that we, we say that, but we don't support it financially, and so. And I'm hoping that the state can come together with the plan. They're still using the Minnesota miracle, which is outdated. And so they're working off of that, and so. Hopefully they can, when you look at what little dollars we get to maintain these facilities. You know, you're talking two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I won't even pay for a roof. And, and that's what happens, you don't have the money to, so what do you do?
I was gonna ask you that too, because in here they said the new building, approximately, they figured it'd be approximately four hundred thousand dollars. For maintenance per year on the new building. And Ryan said that the money that we get from the state, like we do now, the two hundred forty thousand. Will probably be almost zero, because the new building is on it, it goes, is based on the age of your building, the older the building, the more money you get, and your building. So we have a hard time at the two hundred forty thousand, how do we come up with the four hundred dollars?
That's what we have to budget, and that's what we have to budget here, and so that's part of the budgeting process, and. And like I've shared before, when you budget, you, your personal account. It'll help you put a little bit of money away someplace for the rainy day fund. And you have to do that in school districts too, but the school district funding is a lot different than your personal account or a business. And if you don't believe me, come on in and sit down with Lindsay. It's interesting, and so, but that's what you, that's what you struggle with, how can you maintain it, you have to do your budgeting and. And do the best you can.
But I think that's what everybody is worried, these people are worried about. I mean, we have businesses that have struggled for eight, nine, ten months here, and they're barely making ends meet. Some of them aren't even, they had to close doors. And it's not just farmers and retailers, these are legitimate businesses that we have. Grown up with all our lives with these businesses around us, what happens if they start closing the doors, you have. Sheens Gas and Brown, let's just say, okay, all of a sudden, they're not gonna, they're closing the doors, they're. Because they can't afford to keep the doors open, and where are we gonna go for propane? We're gonna have to go further away, and then the taxes. Taxes get put on other people, because when most, those commercial businesses close. That gives dividend out to the rest of us, even, and that, those are the people, I don't, they're, and I truly believe that. It's not that they don't want something. But not as expensive to get us through the tides here and do something. But, but not so extravagant where. We don't know what's gonna happen here, and they don't know, and they don't wanna close the doors, because they want their businesses to stay open for their employees. Because when, it's a domino effect when a business closes, they have twenty employees, those twenty employees lose their jobs, where do they go? Then all of a sudden the kids leave school, and your kids are. It's not that they don't want to help and, and build something, but not as extravagant, and I think that's.
The other side that's handy, like if you don't have a school district, you're gonna lose both methods, you're gonna lose president, you have to close a school because.
Well, I'm not saying close a school, but gosh, no, and I don't think.
This is, we, we have to perform with the vote. I think what happens after February night, we take a look at that and go, okay, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna continue to try to go with referendum, referendum again? Or do we wanna go back to the drawing board and start?
So, I mean, well, I get that, but what's happening out here now, Jamie, and, and you've probably heard it, I've got a couple phone calls. People were calling residents and saying, are you gonna vote yes or no, and when they, I'm leaving, when I told them no. They got frustrated with me and told me that, oh my gosh, you need to vote yes, because we have to have this school, and we gotta have.
I don't believe.
That's, that's, that's like bullying them to vote.
Because I've been on the call.
Were you, were you on every call that called out?
We're all sitting just like this.
Well, that's what she said, they kinda asked me why I voted, why I wanna vote no, and this and that, and she said I felt like I got. Like, it's, those are things that are happening out there. And that are dominant affecting everything else here, because people are saying, oh, they're gonna make sure it falls through by calling everybody in.
Everywhere, if you will, if you would have went to McCray, they did the same thing, they had a vote yes committee. But they went out and pushed, just like there's a vote no committee that are putting a point, it's no different.
Okay, who, who, on that vote yes committee, who finances that? Who, who finances the vote yes committee? It's not the district, if that's what you're. No, no, I'm just asking, so it's.
Contributions?
A bunch of donations, just like the vote no, so that's the only place there's any money. So, okay.
And if the teachers are doing it, they have to do it after hours.
Where are they getting the list of names from?
Education Minnesota, Education Minnesota purchased the list, which is totally from the Secretary of State's office, which is totally legal to do.
Okay, I'm just asking, because people are wondering how they're getting.
Honestly, some of the names and numbers, like, they're not current numbers, so I mean, that's kinda interesting too.
The, the only thing, I, I just, I just feel this on you too, and everybody's entitled to do their own thing, the only thing. In this situation, when we are dealing with something so expensive, when we are heating up. Students that aren't act, I know they're able to vote, so I'm not taking away the vote, but when you're heating up people that are even gonna be. Contributing to the tax pool, just to get the vote. I'm just saying, well, if they're a college student.
They still have the right to vote.
And I did not say they don't have rights, but I'm just saying, but we're specifically hitting them up to encourage them to vote, when we're dealing with such a. Struggling time, it's COVID, farmers are struggling, businesses are struggling, they're not gonna be paying taxes.
I thought about that too, and the other side of it that I thought was, these are the ones that just left here and went off to college, and they're the ones that know if they're coming out. Prepared and they have the facilities, like these other kids are going to in college, or if they're going there and they're starting behind. Like, when I went to college, I started behind. No, I just, it's there, it's there, it's their perception of whether they think something else has to be done.
You can go out the back door in your backyard, and if you have a good teacher, that teacher can teach you in the backyard, they can teach you.
That's what you believe.
It's not a building.
Okay, Dave, I have not had that, that coming back to me. You know, I, and so if, if that's happening, it shouldn't be happening.
Ninety percent of people I talk. Are just going to books now, so. Honestly, like, I mean, I had one girl, I asked her last night, I'm like, she lives in Arizona now, I'm super jealous, like. She doesn't come back to Minnesota, that's what I, I haven't had, and I, I don't, I don't, I think you'd hear, because we can all hear each other.
All right, moving on to the bold learning plan and COVID.
Just to, I was gonna just update you, maybe the principals can help out with this, where we're at with the learning plans, we've got the. Preschool through K, our sixth grade now is in, in, in learning now, in-person learning, which is good to see. They're all excited, and so we're doing that, the high school has moved into the, the hybrid, and so. If you're going to share with that, Jim or Brett, any more than what. Jim is heading heads the advisory group for the COVID, and so he has the weekly communication with his advisory group. And that's been a good group. Our numbers have been going down as far as the county numbers. Which is a good sign, where they are today, where it was way back in early October, since we've had those numbers. So why, I don't know, and it's, but we're hope, our hope is to. The staff is starting to get the vaccine now, vaccinations, and we did it last week, and now we got a. Opening right now for another fifteen, I think, Jim? Fifteen people, so the staff is getting the vaccine, which they're in the category now that it's this teaching staff and the parents. Are in line to get it, so. If you're going to add, I mean, that.
Yeah, after our meeting last Thursday with the advisory council, we just. We wanted to make sure that the teachers have a chance to get vaccinations, and we're, we're hoping that. We can get kids back into the building as soon as possible, I know, I know, neighboring, people are emailing me that, neighboring districts, they just brought their kids back. You know, I, I appreciate that, but we're, we make our own decisions here, and, and so we've, we've really put a lot of faith into this council. And, and while I made it real clear at the beginning that, that the administration makes the final say. We've really taken to heart what they've been telling us, and really value their input, we've had a lot of people to put in on. A lot of time on this, and I think they've done a very good job, and so I just, I really respect their. Their, their input on this, so, but we don't have a date in mind yet, but, but I would say pretty soon, very soon, we'll have. Everybody back in.
That's if our numbers don't turn around, so, community members, let's keep what's going in the right direction now, and.
When we, when we first started this, we really worked hard to keep kids in the building, and a big part of that was, we didn't wanna have to. Make a decision and switch and say, okay, you can come back next week, and then, oh, now you gotta go back home for the next week. And we're, we're considering the same thing right now, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make the decision, and then next week have to. Undo that decision, so, but I, I think it's, we're getting pretty comfortable, so. I think it's gonna be very soon.
Okay, any other questions? We're hoping to get everybody back in as soon as we can, but I think they've had a lot of success with the hybrid with ICE laws. And I think that goes back to our staff. That's not an easy way to do it, but I think they're having success with it, and we hope it continues. And it's always a worry, you know, what's gonna, coming out of this, what's, what are we gonna find with? With the mental state of kids, as well as their physical and their, and the support that they've got, and. We don't know, and so it's kind of a worrisome thing to think about, and, and so, but. We're gonna continue with the back, we're hoping to get the staff. Vaccinated as quick as they can, and it'll be another, this week, there's fifteen more, and so I think we've had up to. That'll give us how many, Jim, now? Or Jim?
I'm sorry.
How many are we gonna have after this week of back staff with vaccination?
Let's see, I won't get an exact number, we've had sixty-four staff responding to a survey. Twenty-seven have, had already either had or scheduled a vaccination, and then we had fourteen responding that. They intended to get a vaccination, but haven't been able to schedule it yet, so. As far as I know, we still had eight slots left over. So somebody can do math on that. Fourteen minus eight, I guess.
Whatever, thank you. Okay, but we're, our goal is to, to get the staff vaccinated, and then they can. Okay.
All right, moving on to number three, adopt a resolution directing the administration. To consider discontinuing and reducing educational programs and position, this is a, a normal, every year we do this. So it's, it's not something new, this one.
It's always something fun, isn't it? One thing that I'm looking at in the finance committee when we, I'd like to meet next week, but I haven't set a date yet. Is to get help with that, and Mike, who has been our financial person, and I've used him for many years. But he's also working with the referendum. Anyway, he and a retired superintendent started working with. Consulting school districts for finance. And I know they are working with G F W right now. And, and they worked with last fall, they worked with Blueworth area where I came from originally. Blueworth area had lost their excess levy, and so they needed to get that back on board. And so they brought, brought Mike and this is colleague, and working on it. It's kind of an interesting system, and, and so I would like to introduce that to the finance committee, Mike and, and his process. What he, what they do is they take schools our size area and in the area, and then start comparing. All these different funds, and where are we at when, in comparison to schools our size? And what you try and do is find out areas that were maybe spending more money on than should be, we got areas that were shorter. And it's a real, I would like to try that, I think it's. I think we, you know, I've told you before, we're, we're gonna have to reduce budget. And, and we know that, and that was said when we had the excess levy, when we bought on there, that it's not set, it's not done. And so, it might be something that I just shared, that you can think about that, and I'll be talking to the finance committee. Within the next week and so on, and we'll see if we can do a meeting with, with them, and. And have them explain that, I talked with Lindsay about it, Lindsay is working with G F W, so she knows, she's familiar with the program. And, and she thinks it's. And uh and she thinks it's, would help and. And I just think we're to a point, or I'm at a point where the budget is. Uh needs to really be fine tuned now and see, we've done all the rough edges, but we gotta do more than that. And so uh, so I think we, I would like to, I just add that there because this is always a resolution that we all are excited about. And.
Okay, so would we pay Mike to, we pay Mike to do that?
We would, yep.
So could we have maybe one of the MSBA, do they do that? Um auditors come out and help us with that?
For a fee. It's not cheap to have those people come in. Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I got carried away.
Um so this is a resolution, so we need to um read this and so if member, one of you would like to. Falling, falling. Introduce the following resolution and move this adoption, resolution to consider discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Whereas the Bold School Board of Independent School District number twenty-five thirty-four adopted the resolution on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. To consider the discontinuance of programs or positions and. And directing the administration to make recommendations to the school board for discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions or. Curtailment of positions. The motion for the adoption of the following resolution was duly seconded by member. Benson, thank you Sandy. And upon a vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof, Brian. Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa? Teresa?
Name.
If you don't, then that means there's certain program reductions we can't meet. And what this is, is just leaving the administration to move forward and come back to you for recommendations. You're not making them. And so, but it's just, it's a.
It's just, it gives them the opposition.
Yeah, I, I get that.
You don't wanna make anything. I agree with you.
Okay, um so we were five in favor and one not in favor and the resolution was declared adopt. All right, moving on, approve the number four, approve course catalog for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Mr. Benson.
We've got the folder there, um you want me to read it, Rayo? Okay, it's some pages, good. Um we do have, every year this comes up, uh every year there's courses that are, that are added or whatever after the proof this. One of the ones that isn't in there quite yet, that will be on there, is the uh, the collaborative videography documentaries building class that we. Preparing with the LHS to do, uh we, we wrote, when I say we wrote, I should say. Uh Mark Leesner and Mark Payne and, and Paul um. Paul, uh. No, um like. Thank you for all the help. Uh they, those guys really did a, a massive amount of work on this, they're able to get a, a, gosh, it was about a thirty thousand dollar. Uh lift grant and these lift grants are brands that you get when you pair with another school, uh. We've currently got, we've got one with the uh Glendale Silver Lake and uh. We also have another one with the LHS, that's that health careers class that we've been doing for a few years. Also, this'll be a new one that, that is not listed in there, it'll end up going under a career tech ed class. Um there's a, like a lot of our classes, there's a limit to the number of students we can have in there, I believe this is eight. Uh because of the max is sixteen that they can have. Um but uh and then what happens is if we have, if we have ten kids sign up and they only have six kids sign up. Uh that, that works out, but for, for now, we just, we limited it. They'll be meeting at the Bird Island Cultural Center, uh we, they've got all the equipment, it's, it's an amazing amount of really. Awesome video equipment that they've got. Uh it'll be under career tech. Uh no, I. It's near, it's near the middle. Uh it'll be called collaborative videography documentary project. And that'll be open to eleven twelve.
Anything else new and exciting?
Well, yeah, we're, we've got just something kind of in the process, Dale showed me a, a. Or had me look up something that a nearby school is doing and will probably be asking the curriculum community that. To meet, um I'm not sure who's all on that, but we'll, uh we'd like to take a look at. What this other school district is doing, it really opens up some elective time for kids, uh I, I was really excited after I watched what they were doing. And I think it's really worth, worth taking. Now it just really opens up elective, so um it's a really kind of innovative project where. Actually, for part of the day, you've got kids kind of creating their own schedule on a daily basis. Kind of depending on what they need to get done on their day. Uh we're gonna, we're gonna talk with this other school and see how it's, how it's going for them, but they were just recently. Recognized by the MREA for, for the excellence of what they're doing, so.
Do you have any on finance?
Yeah, uh. Personal finance, they do that, yep. Yeah, that's, actually I met with the uh Cheryl Peterson not too long ago, just talking about that very thing and. And uh just seeing if we could get some. Uh maybe local investment people to come in and actually do a presentation for kids, uh I think if. If kids understood how to use a financial calculator, they'd start saving ten bucks a month right now because. They, they have no idea how huge that would be. And of course, you get, it's easy to say, uh I'm sure we all wish now we could go back and start saving ten bucks a month when we're. When we're sixteen, but uh. Uh you know, it's, it's easy to say, but at the same time, I didn't know that when I was sixteen, so. Yeah, it's important.
Thank you. So, um we need a motion to approve the course catalog. Made by Sagal, second, seconded by Bolin, any further discussion or question? Hearing nothing, we'll start with Jamie.
Hi.
Sandy?
Um.
Melissa?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. Number five is adopt policy two thirteen school board findings, enclosure number three is the third reading of that. So, just made by Bolin.
Second to Sagal.
Seconded by Sagal, is there any questions or discussion on? Hearing nothing, we'll vote, we'll begin with Sandy.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. Number six, approve the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-one um food service director contract, enclosure number four. Any questions and discussions?
I just wanna say thank you, Margaret, for all the stuff you've done for the last. You're amazing, you and your staff, you guys have kept a lot of kids fed and we all appreciate it. Thank you.
She's still packing bags.
I know.
Give Margaret credit, well, I'll tell you, she's a true.
They work hard.
And she tries to create the menu that the kids will like and she works very hard at that. She's a dedicated employee, so their contract she gets is a two point ninety. Increase, so. They're in line with the other single contracts, now we got the single contracts done. So, good, okay.
All right, um and we'll vote, Melissa?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. Number seven, paraprofessional recognition week is. So we have a proclamation here, enclosure number five, I will read it. They have Minnesota proclamation, whereas Minnesota is home to more than twenty thousand paraprofessionals providing services in multiple settings within schools. Including support for instruction, student activities, individual student, as well as numerous other tasks that. Contribute to educational success and whereas the support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral. Student achievement resulting in even better, more effective Minnesota school and whereas. The state of Minnesota and Minnesota Department of Education are committed in to excellence in education, recognizing the important role. A paraprofessional's play in ensuring educational success and whereas the Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate. The contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Recognition Week from January twenty-fifth through January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. Now therefore, I, Tim Walls. Governor of Minnesota, you know, I do hereby proclaim the week of January twenty-fifth. To thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, as Paraprofessional's Recognition Week and we thank all of them. Thanks for all you do. All right, moving on, upcoming dates, uh February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, our regular meeting. Um seven PM. We'll stay here and, and also via Zoom, so whichever, whichever works best for you to make. Meeting would be able, um that's what that will be, there may be, sounds like there may be a finance committee meeting coming up and. There could be a boardwork session coming up, so. Tonight's conversation, so with that, um I would entertain a. Thank you.
Second Benson.
Thank you very much and is there any discussion on that? There never is. That's when Jeff was here, there was the. All right, so with that, um Teresa, we'll vote on that. Brian?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Motion carries, nine oh two, thank you all very much for coming out.